Thank you, Jess.
This is the meeting of the Audit Committee of the Local Development Corporation. It is Wednesday, October 20th. A quorum is present and it is 9:05.
And I'm supposed to just say this, which is this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom in accordance with Part E of Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which amended the New York Open Meetings Law to allow for electronic meetings due to COVID-19. Fred?
Lori, we'll turn it over to you. You may be muted.
Does everyone hear me? Yes, no?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I heard a few yeses. I just want to report that for the 12/31/21 audit, we have received a fee estimate from PKF, formerly AVZ, that had done our audit for the past four years of a fee increase of $450, which is a fee for the LDC of $1,350. It's a 4% increase, $50 from year to year. We're in the process of waiting for their engagement letter and we will, you know, just, I'm presenting that to the board. Is there any questions on that?
What's their total fee?
$1,350 for the LDC.
Okay, thank you. Lori, is that audit about to begin?
Yes, we're starting interim, remote interim fieldwork. So I've been providing them with certain records to start their testing for interim. It's going to start next week.
And you mentioned to me there's a slight change in their opinion?
Yes, effective December 15th, the Statement of Auditing Standards has changed. The new auditor's report will basically have what it has in the past, but it will start out with the opinion will be first on top. And there'll be the regulations of naming all the standards and there'll be a section, unknown material matters, that also will be in the audit report. So it'll look differently than in the past and mostly it's just to give the opinion at the beginning of the report.
Lori, did we officially approve the amount in a prior meeting? I don't recall.
We knew approximately, but now I have the hard figures, so.
And I'll intone a motion to ex.
Does the committee do that? Or do we just?
We recommend it to the board.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We have a consensus from the committee for the amount then? Everybody all right?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at the resolution that we did in January just to make sure that the dollar amount, what we approved was above what they're telling us now. And, oh, but I went to the IDA, so I can tell you IDA, but that's not going to help us right now. I'm sorry.
We have a consensus.
Okay, okay.
Lori, is there anything else?
No, not for the Audit Committee.
A motion to conclude the Audit Committee of the LDC. And Maria, I see your hand. Is there a second?
Martin Callahan, second.
On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun votes yes, the meeting is concluded. We will now open the Audit Committee for the Industrial Development Agency. It is Wednesday, October 20th. A quorum is present. It's now 9:09. Lori, once again, I'll turn it to you.
I'm just gonna.
Once again, Lisa has to read the statement.
I'm just gonna say this little, "This meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom in accordance with Part E of Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which amended the New York Open Meetings Law to allow for electronic meetings due to COVID-19." Lori?
Okay, we've received a formal email and a proposal telling us our audit fee for 12/31/21 from AVZ, I'm sorry, PKF, which is formerly known as AVZ firm. They had merged last year, as mentioned. Our fee estimate for this year for 12/31/21 is $22,100. It's up $450 from the prior year, a 2% change. We are waiting for the engagement letters, but we, that is the fee that's been committed to us. Is there any questions?
I don't think we need a motion here. We just looked back at prior minutes and we approved a number not to exceed $23,000, so we are under that limit.
Okay. And I checked the LDC also, the number for the, we approved above what they've quoted us, so we're good with the LDC also.
Lori, is there anything different in the IDA audit than from the LDC audit?
Well, no, there isn't, but as, I wanted to mention two other minor things. The auditors are starting their fieldwork and they're doing it remotely, as in the past. And that will start next Monday and I've been providing them with some preliminary documentation. The other item I want to mention is the auditor's opinion effective 12/15/21. Any reports for year ends after that have to follow the new reporting standards on the Statement of Auditing Standards. The report, for the most part, is the same, but it's going to start off with the opinion and then it will have basis for opinion, emphasis of matter, and a new section called Key Audit Matters, which will specifically address key areas in the audit. So it will look a little bit different than in the past. Any questions?
Lori, their fee, is that comparable to competitors in that same industry?
Yes, yes, it is. I actually think we do a little bit better because I do give them a pretty good comprehensive package of documents. So I know there is some savings based on the fact that I'm feeding them the statements. So it's pretty comparable.
Felix, back in the day, the auditors used to do a lot of work. They basically prepared the financial statements. Now it's, you know, they're the financial statements of management and it's up to the auditors to do their checks and balances to make sure we got it right. So, yeah, I think, I think the fee is comparable. I think we're still below perhaps some of the others.
Okay, I just didn't, I didn't really know the ranges that they get for an audit. I've been out of business for a while. So I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, we were being competitive. The price was being competitive.
Thank you, Lori.
Lori, anything else?
But it worked for the rest of us.
Self unmute. Wait, sorry, no, no other questions, no other items I want to mention.
Okay, there are no other questions. A motion to conclude the Audit Committee of the IDA?
So.
And Maria, Felix, second. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Braun votes yes, the meeting is concluded. We will now return.
I'm sorry, excuse me. We're having a little technical issue. I'll be back.
Bear with us for a minute. We will open the, I guess we can open the Local Development Corporation meeting. It is Wednesday, October 20th. It is now 9:13. A quorum is present. And I will pause for a minute till Lisa comes back.
Fred?
She addresses our technical problem.
I'm sorry, is it talking to me to say the blurb?
It is.
Okay. I apologize. Bill is having some issues joining us. We're trying to figure out what's going on. Where's my blurb? I apologize. "This meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom in accordance with Part E of Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which amended the New York Open Meetings Law to allow for electronic meetings due to COVID-19."
Okay, Lori, we'll turn it over to you for the budget discussion.
And Lori, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, so the first report we're going to do is the August comparison. My, it's saying my internet connection is unstable. Can I, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Gotcha.
Okay, good. I'm waiting in the office, but.
August?
Hey Lisa, before.
Hi, Bill.
I'm kidding. I am on, I could not join by computer. Our help desk said your link was corrupted. I don't know if anybody else had trouble getting in. It was blocked by our network.
That's why we're having problems.
Might be.
Yeah. There's something wrong with, they kept saying it did not look like a normal Zoom link. And so our security people could not, could not get in. So you have, well, I don't know what happened, but it's not the correct link. So are other people having, so before we start the meeting, here's a procedural question. Are other people having a hard time getting into this meeting?
I had to get in a different way than ever before. Before, I simply just clicked things and it was pretty simple. This time I had to put in a meeting identifier and then a passcode.
So here's my concern, if we're having trouble getting in, are there members of the public who can't get in? And therefore this meeting is not valid.
You have other people.
There's other people.
Only one person at a time.
This is Lisa.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Peter Curry, Michael from Todd's office, they're in the waiting room right now. So I think that it's, you know, I don't know if other people are trying to get in, but people are able to join. I don't know if it's difficult, but.
But didn't Jim say he had, he got kicked off a couple of times?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that was.
But he's nodding.
I did, but then once I clicked on it a second time, it allowed me back in. But initially it went, it went, the screen spun and it had me, it had me re-enter everything to get back in, similar to Howard.
We've been having some internet issue in the office. So what about everybody? I know Howard had some issues. What about people who are out of this building? I see Steve Rip just joined.
No problems on my end.
No, none on mine.
I didn't have any problems.
Get right in.
Bill, we do have three people from the public. You know, I expected all of them, but.
Okay, well, let's go with the meeting and if you get complaints that people couldn't get in, we'll address it then.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to share my screen so that you can see Lori's August.
Oh, please, Sheldon.
Profit and loss.
Included in your package is the profit and loss budget versus actual for the month, year-to-date, ending August 2020.
I just lost Lori.
Lori, we can't hear you.
And she's not muted.
Must be internally in your office.
I'm going to walk over to you, Lisa.
Yep, that would be great. Thank you. Yep. And I just got an email from Peter saying he can hear and see everything. Thank you, Peter. He's in the waiting room.
I got that too.
Bill, since this meeting is also being recorded, would it still be valid if somebody couldn't get in but got the ability to see and hear the meeting at a different date?
I have to think about that.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go on to the report that I shared, shared with everyone.
Lori, you can do August quick since we have September too.
Okay, so during the month of August, basically in the LDC, there was very little activity. The activity in the expense column is a culmination of catching up year-to-date costs on the cost allocation between the IDA and the LDC. Overall, for the eight months ended, we're at a net loss of $50,000, which is based on a pro-rata share of the budget. We're actually ahead of budget by $20,000. Is there any questions on the LDC August report, profit-loss versus budget?
Are we expecting any income in the next four months for the LDC?
No, I don't, I don't expect anything significant for the LDC except for we are going to be doing our annual admin fees in the next couple of months. So that's that, you know, $5,000 or so that you see.
We already got it.
Oh, we already got, oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's for next year, next year. So.
Other than interest income, there's really nothing on the horizon.
We have no, no projects. I guess it's possible that something could just appear and if that were the case, then we would have an application fee, but that's, that's the most that I expect.
Any other questions on August?
Do you want me to switch it?
No.
No, I'll, we'll accept both the same.
Oh, okay, we're going to go on to the next report and the package is September, year-to-date, actual versus budget for the LDC for the month of September, as mentioned. I wanted to, as it's coming up on the screen, there was no activity as far as revenue, a small amount of interest. And pretty much the only thing that you'll see is in the expenses is we pay all of our insurance for the LDC. The policies are in September, so that's why there's a little change for that month. Again, year-to-date, we're at a net loss of about $67,000, but overall, we're still expected for a net loss for the year, but we're a little bit below of what our expectations were. Are there any questions on the LDC budget versus actual for the month of September, year-to-date also?
Our budgeting has been working well.
If there are no questions, entertain a motion to accept Lori's report for both August and September.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mrs. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Braun votes yes, both reports have been accepted.
Okay. The next item that's in the package is actually the budget, Paris Budget Report. And it's for, we'll show the budget that we presented last month. It remains unchanged, but this is it in Paris and you have to project it out for the next couple of years. So, um, okay. Just trying to say, I want to, if you need to see which report I'm talking about, I'm just going to call it up and that's not it.
And this has to be filed November 1st?
Yes, November 1st. I'm actually going to show it to you only because Lisa stepped away.
I'm sorry, I'm right here.
Okay, that's okay. I'm sorry.
It's in the packet, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
It is, and I'm just going to share, just give me one second. This right here.
That's it. Okay.
Okay, hold on, yep.
I'll take top one. There we go, perfect. Thank you, Lisa. Okay.
You guys can see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, all right.
So included in the package is the Paris, this is a draft. It's been unsubmitted, but it's due, as Fred mentioned, November 1st. And it shows our budget for the next couple of years. It shows our last year actual audited results, our current year budget. And it's the budget we presented at the last meeting and also a projection of it for the future. So that is also presented in the package. Is there any questions on that budget?
We need a motion to accept the budget and the authorization to file it under Paris. So, Felix, is there a second?
Second, Marty Callahan.
Thank you. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Braun votes yes, the budget is approved and authorized to file.
I know this is after the fact, but Lori, we don't show any revenue other than the administrative fees going forward for the next several years?
Yes, and that's based on what we know is in the hopper or what we think is coming. So in the past, we've showed this type of budget similarly for LDC until we knew there were those two projects up and coming, which we usually have a rough idea about a year or two before. But at this point, we're not going to project anything because of our history of not many projects.
Okay.
Any other questions on the budget for Paris? The last thing I want to mention is timely payments. And I'm going to be discussing this as part of my presentation at all meetings. It's one of the things that Fred had discussed with us, that all legal and contractual payments for the LDC as of 9:30 have been met in accordance with the requirements.
Really focusing on the fact that the LDC now has employees.
Right, exactly.
And had we had filed payments, they would have been distributed within 30 days, although I don't think that applies to the LDC anymore.
Right. Okay.
Do you see anything else?
No, that's all. Does anyone have any questions?
Need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, you know what, that's, Lori just, sorry, Fred. Lori just made a good point. We have not heard back from OSC yet. They said approximately a month. I think we're about, at that point, maybe a little past. I'm not pushing it, but just wanted to mention, we still have not received anything.
And for the transcription, the OSC is the Office of State Controller.
Yes.
There's no further business. A motion to adjourn the meeting of the Local Development Corporation.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Second.
One more second.
Thank you. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Meeting is concluded. All right, we will now open the meeting of the Industrial Development Agency. It is Wednesday, October 20th. It is 9:26 a.m. A quorum is present and Lisa for the statement.
Oh, my statement, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me because I would have just totally forgot about that. I was trying to figure out how to get this stuff ready to share my screen. "This meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom in accordance with Part E of Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which amended the New York Open Meetings Law to allow for electronic meetings due to COVID-19." I think I might, I might practice and see if I can get like a weather reporter. I feel like I've said that nicely.
You need to set it to music, Lisa.
Oh, no, no, then I'm not my person. Where's Terry? Terry will, she'll confirm. I should not be singing.
You probably won't get the job, Lisa, because you're accurate. Weather people don't need to be accurate.
Right.
I take that as a compliment, Felix, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Lori will go right into CFO's report.
Sure. Included in the package is your IDA, the profit and loss statement, budget versus actual, year-to-date, and for the month of August. During the month of August, I just want to mention, we did have three closings and we had one sales tax extension. So you see that over in Revenue section. And then as far as our expenses, nothing extraordinary has, our monthly routine expenses. I did want to mention, you see some negative expenses and that is because once we approved the cost allocation to the LDC, some of those expenses moved out in the month of August to the LDC. So year-to-date, we're a little ahead of budget, year-to-date. So for the eight months, we're ahead of budget almost 1.3. And I think obviously we're going to exceed a balanced budget, which is what we forecasted for the year. Are there any questions on that? Okay, go right into September. Thanks, Fred. Included in the packages is the profit and loss budget versus actual, year-to-date, and for the month of September. During the month of September, we had two closings and most of our expenses are normal recurring monthly expenses. We're net positive for the month and we're net positive year-to-date, 1.7 year-to-date versus budget of zero. So we're actually ahead of budget year-to-date.
What, what happened in those eight months that we didn't anticipate?
I, I can speak to that a little bit. So we're taking a couple of things out of order, but that's perfectly fine. We're going to discuss in a little more detail later on in the agenda, the prevailing wage legislation. Basically, it's a, it's a major change and a lot of projects are under the impression, you know, whether it's right or wrong, there's a lot of unknowns with this legislation, but they're under the impression that if they close this year, they won't be subject to prevailing wage. So there is a flurry of activity. Just about every project that's ready to close is coming forward and saying, "We want to close this year before January 1st." So we've had multiple closings in the past few weeks and I expect that we're going to have a bunch more coming up. I've been signing documents almost daily for closings. And I think it.
Yeah, there will be many more closings between now and December 31st. The problem is a lot of the companies are closing on the IDA transaction, but they're not signing, they may not be signing their construction contracts between now and the end of the year. And that's where there may be, it may become subject to it. The statute's very unclear. The, a state commission was supposed to have been appointed a year ago to implement the rules. There's a lot of questions on how to interpret the statute. Nobody, nobody knows how this statute's actually going to work. The prior governor was preoccupied with other things other than appointing the members to the council that he was supposed to have done. And the new governor hasn't, it's not, so far has not been on her radar screen either. So come January 1, there'll be a tremendous amount of uncertainty. And at the New York State EDC meeting in Cooperstown last month, this was a major topic of discussion. Nobody knows how this statute's going to work and the impact on it. That's why there is a flurry of activity where people are hoping they grandfathered in so they're not subject to prevailing wages. It, it may impact closings in the first quarter of next year as people are trying to understand the impact of it.
No, I know Lisa's got it in her further on the agenda, but if I understand it correctly, it is for projects of $5 million or more where the aggregate of the benefits exceeds 30% of cost, however defined? Or is that not correct?
Well, that's correct. Where the construction costs, a part of the trouble is no one knows what construction cost means. Is it the actual construction cost of, you know, constructing the building? Does it include architectural, engineering, environmental remediation, title reports, surveys, legal costs? All the soft costs included with construction? Does it even include the value of the land for the acquisition? Nobody knows that. And then the other problem is, you said, Fred, if the amount of benefits being granted equal more than 1/3 of the total project cost than, construction costs, then it is subject to prevailing wage. Now, it almost becomes circular because if it becomes subject to prevailing wage and your construction costs go up 25%, the value of your benefits may then fall below 1/3. Again, those are the issues that people are looking at. And so, you know, mortgage recording tax exemption, finite number, that's easy to figure out. Sales tax exemption, finite number, easy to figure out. Where you run into problems would be the difference between pilot payments and real property taxes. At best, that's a guesstimate. Nobody knows if it was on, if it was on the tax rolls and not in the IDA's name, what the assessed value would actually, how the assessor would assess it and what that number would be after it's completed. And nobody knows where taxes are going over the course of, say, a 10 or 15-year pilot. So trying to compare and coming up with, is the pilot amount going to be enough to trigger the prevailing wage is a very difficult determination.
You know, a very easy way to define cost would be with the accountants. Whatever can be capitalized and put on a balance sheet with defined cost, but that's probably too easy.
Well, but again, though, some, certain of those soft costs are capitalizable and you wouldn't want to count that. I mean, I think you really want to count just the actual construction costs. You know, and does that include if you're putting in built-in cabinets? Does that count? You know, things like that. So it's, or other built-ins that really may or may not be construction, could be personal fixtures. You know, they did a very poor job in the statute of defining it. They're leaving it to this commission and we, as of today, the commission members have not been appointed. And I can imagine.
I have a question, Bill. So does, is the IDA responsible to police this? If this goes into effect the way it is? Because, you know, we're giving them, we're giving them the, you know, the breaks and the incentives, but do. But do we, do we have to police it? Or is that just once it's done, it's up to them to run it? Make sure.
Well, we're going to put in, we're going to put into both the application and lease documents that the company has to certify to us whether they're subject to it or not. But here's the kicker. They gave basically a private right of enforcement to any, any citizen to sue the IDA and the company to get the benefit. You know, so I imagine labor will be looking at every IDA project and everyone that's not paying prevailing wages will probably get sued even if the construction costs, you know, far exceed, you know, thirty percent of the, of the value of the benefits. I imagine there's going to be a lot of litigation.
And keep in mind that it's not just the benefits we give. If they get a grant from New York State or they get, you know, support from, from another entity, that counts towards it. So it's, it's larger than just us.
Yeah, and, and it also includes if they get tax exempt bonds, the, the taxes of interest. So the difference between tax exempt interest rate and taxable, which is again, almost impossible to prove over the life of a transaction. If they get low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits, if they were to get any other benefits, if they were in enterprise zone, any other benefits that they might get, you know, some of our affordable housing projects get money from the county in home funds. That would be counted for it. So there's a whole host of things. And you remember, this is paying prevailing wage, which is higher than a commercial union scale. This is, this is the rate that the municipalities and school districts have to pay. So, and there's no carve-out for PLA. But you, you can't even come in and negotiate with the unions for a project labor agreement. So if you look at the, the current prevailing wage policies that the IDA and the LDC have in place right now, we say if five percent, uh, excuse me, if the construction costs are more than five million dollars, it's being financed with tax and bonds, they're subject to prevailing wages unless they enter into PLA. And then we had, we, Brookhaven is the only one on Long Island that's a carve-out, that it was subject to, to be financed by state agency that was not subject to prevailing wage, wasn't subject to prevailing wage. So i- if we, so that carve-out will go away now because DAS needs now subject, every, every state agency is subject to this. So we probably will not be able to give that carve-out. So whenever there's tax and bond financings now, it's almost always going to be subject to prevailing wages. But before we could do a PLA, we can't do that now. I would not be shocked to see a lot of not-for-profits finance things going forward with a commercial bank loan. And when the project's completed, take out the bank loan with tax and bonds.
Did that answer your question, Felix? I, I, I mean, it's really what happened was a big move in closing things that we didn't have on our radar.
I, I understand what, what it was about. My follow-up question, and it's, it, it shouldn't require an answer like as long as that one was. But I'm very.
Answer is yes.
That wasn't a, that wasn't a derogatory statement. I appreciate that information because it did clear, clarify, you know, why we, why we picked up, you know, almost a million of something in about a million.
Probably picking up more.
Now, but what we're picking up would, it would most likely have been closings in, in two thousand and twenty-two, I would assume. Because they're pushing those two thousand and twenty-twos, two thousand and twenty-one.
I mean, I, I think a lot of them would have closed this year anyways. They're just, they're ready to close. I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of these ones we've been working on for months. So there, maybe one or two of them might have gotten pushed to next year, you know, something like North Point Winter Brothers. You know, they want to close, that might have gotten pushed. I don't know. But they've been pretty, you know, they've been pretty, they said, when they submitted their application, they want to close this year. I don't know how many of these might have gotten pushed, but.
If you look at the amended budget line, the nine-month amended budget line, well, we anticipated eight hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of closings. We actually got two million five, two million three hundred and forty-six thousand, about a million five more than what we anticipated. I, I don't think we were that far off in our estimations when we put the budget in. My assumption is, is that the, the balance of that one five was coming from two thousand and two closings. The reason why I bring it up is that we, we need to be careful then when we prepare the two thousand and twenty-two budget that we're not anticipating revenue that we've already gotten.
Well, honestly, Felix, it's, it's always a guess. It's, you know, an educated, but it's a guess. Right now, my whiteboard next to me has fifteen projects that are ready to close. Some of them have been ready to close for quite some time. I mean, I'm looking at one of them. Three of them up here, I think. There's probably three of them that I'm not so sure I'm going to be able to erase because they've been up there for so long. They're ready to close. There's, we still have contact. They tell us they're getting things set and they're planning on closing. And they are actually planning on closing this year. But if we, if I had, each year when we do the budget for these projects and some of them have been ready to close since like two thousand and eighteen, we counted them each year, or maybe we didn't, just depending on the year. It's really an imperfect estimate when we put together this budget. It's really hard to tell what's going to show up one day and close in two months and what's going to languish for years. So I, I try to take the budget with a grain of salt and keep it in mind that we don't have, we can't look back year to year and say, you know, traditionally, this is what we see happening and expect it to be consistent.
Felix, that said, I can assure you that Lisa and Laurie spent a tremendous amount of time.
Trying.
Putting this budget together as imperfect as the revenue line is.
Yeah.
I, I, I fully understand and agree with that. But what I'm, what Bill just explained to us was one of those hiccups that no one expected to have happen. And the budget saw a, a large increase in revenue. Yeah, if we had those projects on the whiteboard and we thought that they were going to, you know, have a good chance of closing in two thousand and twenty-one, then we would have put, I would assume we would have put that in the, the estimated budget line. But all I'm suggesting is, is that if indeed people are pushing forward their closings, and to me, it sounds like they are, then we just need to be cognizant of that when we put the budget together for the upcoming year.
And, and just so you know, Laurie just pointed out to me that last year our revenue was seven hundred thousand. We were behind last year. So it's, it is.
Some of it moved.
You know, it's, it is very hard to predict.
Yeah, and as I pointed out in the past, I've been tracking the, the bottom line numbers for the last thirty or forty years. And between thirty and forty percent of those years, we've actually been in the red. So it's, it's very difficult to project. Before we move on to the, the two thousand and twenty-two budget, we need to approve the operating, or the finance report for August and September. You have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Yes, both of those are approved. And now for the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
This is the budget that we had discussed at our last meeting. Actually, it's input in Paris. It's unsubmitted yet. It's due November first, but it's presented here for your review. Just to add on to the discussions that we had in the past, last year we were behind our revenue numbers. So some of our projects, after we did our budget, closed later than forecasted. And we actually, last year had a net negative balance, going to the point that Fred mentioned. We've had plenty of years in the red and some years not. So again, this, this current year estimated budget is based on the projects that we know of that we don't expect to close by the end of this year. And also our expectations for salaries, wages, and the individual expense accounts. And again, this is just really showing you the budget that we reviewed in detail at the last minute, just showing you in the Paris format, which is what will be officially published.
Which is basically a break-even.
Yes, it's a break-even, exactly. Are there any questions on that budget?
There are none. I need a motion to accept the budget and authorize Laurie to file with Paris.
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Martin Callahan.
On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Ron votes yes. And the budget is approved and authorized to file.
The last item I want to mention is we will be showing this on all of our agendas, just in the CFO section about timely payments. This is to communicate to you that all payments required legally have been made timely and up to date. And also I'll explain when we start getting pilot money and that we've also explained that disperse that pilot money within the timeframes required by law, less than thirty days. But we had no pilot money. I'm just explaining for the future. As this relates to the timely legal payments relate to any withholding, whether it's withholding for taxes, deferred compensation or retirement system, those withholdings have been made timely.
Any questions for Laurie? Okay, I think we can move on.
Okay.
You want to come back over here?
I, I'm going to come over here.
You going to sit here or are you going to stay there?
I'll stay up here.
Okay. Thanks, Laurie.
Let me just make this look normal again. Hold on, give me one second, everybody. I apologize. Okay. Okay, so Josh, will you bring Steve Rip in, please? So the next item on our agenda, we have two applications. Sorry, I have to find my notes. We have two applications on the agenda. They are for Gen H and for Gen S. I'm going to start with for Gen H. This is a nine hundred and twenty kilowatt fuel cell project on two thousand square feet of the Holtsville Terminal, which is at five eighty-six Union Avenue. It's a five point two seven five million dollar project and they're requesting a twenty-five-year pilot and sales tax. So let, let's take them individually because we're going to need you to accept applications or consider applications for both of these. Does anybody have any questions? Steve Howard, did you want to add anything?
I think, you know, unless somebody has some questions, I, I think, and I know the board has considered and consummated a couple of projects of this similar nature in the past. So I think you're probably familiar with the, these type of projects and the benefits to the community that derives from them.
Only thing I would add is I met with, with Steve on, on Monday. He's Senior Vice President, Chief Operating Officer. Sound right, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay. He showed me a list of the shareholders of each of these LLCs. And I would tell you, they are second, third, and fourth generation, the Bernstein family, who started Northville Industries. And that's basically who's behind all of this. I also reviewed their audited financial statements that are prepared by KPMG. They're substantial. And you, you, all, all of you would be proud to look at those numbers with a big smile on your face.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Lenore?
So for the benefit, Steve, for me, I'm new to this board. And I don't really quite completely understand what this project or these projects that are up right now are, are about. Could you just give me a little rundown of what a fuel cell energy storage plant is actually doing and just a, just a little bit of a synaps, a synopsis, just in case somebody else here may not understand it. I know I don't. So I'd really appreciate that.
Sure. These are power generation technologies. They're, they're not fuel storage. So they are power generating units. And they take fuel and convert that to hydrogen in a, in a process called catalytic steam generation and reformation. And then the hydrogen and the air are supplied to the fuel cells. And through a, the hydrogen and oxygen combine electrochemically to produce direct current electricity, heat, and water. And then that direct current electricity is converted to alternating current, which is what we use on the grid and deliver to the grid.
Okay, well, I did look this up. So this all sounds familiar because I wanted to have my homework. So I didn't look like or sound like a complete moron about this. You know, as I was reading about it and trying to understand it a little bit better, one of the, I have, I'm involved in a lot of different chambers. And one of the chambers had speakers, and I don't know whether or not this actually pertains to you guys or not. But they were talking about something, some project over in, in the Holbrook-Holtsville area, which assuming is your project. And there are a lot of people who are saying that that's very dangerous. So could you speak to me about the danger of these types of things being in the middle of a community? Because that seemed to be their biggest argument. And I really didn't get much, except for that they're dangerous. And I know, you know, people scream and holler and go, that's no good. And, but they don't give me a reason. So could you explain that to me? How, is it dangerous or what are your safeguards?
So this is a technology that originated back in the nineteen sixties, was used in the space program to provide power to, you know, the space shuttles. And this Dusan's fleet has what, hundreds of installations around the world, well over ten million operating hours. It's proven to be extremely reliable, very durable, very safe. The safety is such that you can site these indoors. We're not, but you can. But that should give you an indication of, you know, the, the, the safety associated with these. Oftentimes, they're utilized for purposes where the quality and reliability of power is of paramount importance. So for data centers backup or for medical facilities, they use fuel cells for, you know, twenty-four, seven reliable power. The units themselves, we have two at our Holtville project, three at our Satacet project. They basically look like container units. So their, each unit is about twenty-nine feet long, about ten feet tall, and about eight feet wide. We're also going to place cooling units, which basically are a matrix of six bands with, on top of the units, which add another six feet of height. So you're talking about sixteen feet tall, twenty-nine feet wide. You know, they run quietly. They're very innocuous. You can cite them just right next to buildings. You know, it's simply because they are quite innocuous, very safe. You know, and, and our terminals, the proximity to any homes in the locations, it's several hundred feet or a third of a mile, you know, it's, it's quite distant. I don't think anybody will see or hear, you know, these units at all.
Great. One last question that I have. So these particular ones, I said, let's use Satacet because I happen to know that area very well. Once your plant is, is up and running, how, how much electricity do you anticipate being able to, I'm guessing, sell to LIPA? And, and what does it equate to in like how many houses? Because that seems to be how people measure the, the alternative energy sources. How many houses can we supply energy to? Just use the Satacet one for an example.
Sure. So these are baseload units, meaning they run pretty much twenty-four, seven. And so at Satacet, it's one point three eight megawatts. It's three units, each unit four hundred and sixty kilowatts. They will run, you know, that would probably, you know, their, their capacity factor is about ninety-five percent of the hours of the year. So that would probably be about twelve thousand megawatt hours per year, which would probably power a, a pro- which would probably power approximately twelve hundred homes.
Very good. Thank you for answering those questions, and I
My pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board?
Anne Marie has her hand.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Is there an ex- excuse me. Am I misremembering a policy this board has established, or is there a specific reason that you are requesting an abatement more than twice what has in the past been our normal period?
Anne Marie, for, for renewable energy projects, our UTEP allows for a longer period, so twenty-five years is within in line with what we've done for the other renewable.
So it's, it's, it's consistent with the other projects we've already done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's connected to the LIPA tariff for community net metered projects is for twenty-five years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions, we need a motion to accept the application for Gen H LLC. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Gucci?
Yes.
Mr. Papaki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Ron votes yes. The application is accepted. There was another application, Lisa?
Yes, there is. The, the next application on the agenda is for for Gen S, which, like the last application, is a one thousand three hundred and eighty kilowatt fuel cell on three thousand square feet of property at nineteen North Bell Mead Road in Satacet. This is a roughly seven million dollar project, and again, they are requesting a twenty-five year pilot and a sales tax exemption. Any, any questions on this one?
Just a general question if I may.
Sure.
The power cells are good, the purpose of the power cells is to generate power for a specific user or to push into the grid?
So it will be connected to the grid, but as a community net metered project, we will have subscribers who will be allocated a, a portion of the output produced by the units.
And I assume that they pay for that, correct?
They do, and, and the value proposition for them is that it represents a discount to what they would be paying ordinarily.
Okay, thank you.
Is there no further questions? I need a motion to accept the application for for Gen S LLC.
A move.
Second?
Second. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Papaki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Ron votes yes. The application for for Gen S LLC is accepted. Thank you, Stephen.
Good luck, Stephen.
Thank you all. I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request, is a resolution from Overbay LLC. Sorry, it's a two-part request. They have asked if we can, they're, they're planning on refinancing their loan, and they asked if they're looking for our sign off on that. And they also need to release some of their property to the Village of Port Jefferson. It's approximately point two eight acres, which will be dedicated to Port Jeff Village for parking. Josh, will you bring Peter in? Bill, do you, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you described it pretty well for that.
Okay.
So and then.
Peter is the attorney.
Peter has another. Yeah.
So I, there's Peter coming in. Peter, did you have anything you wanted to add? Not anymore.
Yeah, no, here I am. No, I actually have nothing to add. They, you're looking to close. Having, having said I have nothing to add, I will now add something. They're looking to close early next month, and, and the dedication of the village was, was part of the requirement in the entire project, and I believe that the village had a pretty much crying need for additional parking. So they're taking that, that land or very close to downtown Port Jeff Village parking.
Does anyone?
Peter, how many spots can they put? It's, it's, it's a little over a quarter of an acre. How many spots can they put on there?
You know, I, I don't know. It really depends on what the village is going to do. I, I can't anticipate that it's very many spots. Probably twenty or so, but at least it's
Again.
Downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No further questions? Need a motion to, for that resolution, to approve that resolution for Overbay LLC.
So moved.
Thank you.
Lenore?
Thank you, Lenore. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Gucci?
Yes.
Mr. Papaki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Thank you.
All right, then. Thank you, board members. I'm actually going to stay on, I'll drop off this, but stay on for the Sun River Town Homes discussion.
Why don't I just take it out of order?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so taking this out of order, the next item on the agenda is a request that we received from Sun Rivers Town Homes LLC. This is a project that, if you recall, is a apartment complex in, well, isn't, I, I would say Manorville, but the reality is that it, it crosses from Manorville to Santa Moritzis. It's in, I think, three school districts, Eastport, South Manor, Santa Moritzis, and also William Floyd. So it's that kind of, that area. But I always think of that as Manorville. But basically, we're getting ready to close this project, Felix. This is another one that's gonna close in the next couple of days. I think next week it's scheduled to close. But Peter told us recently that their project costs are higher than anticipated. And as a request, their sales tax exemption is higher than anticipated. And so from my, my understanding, Bill, correct me if I'm mistaken, what we're gonna do is we're gonna close this project as already anticipated, and then we're gonna do another, follow a public hearing to consider the additional sales tax exemption and then bring that back to you. So basically, I'm just letting you know and then also asking you to schedule the, the public hearing. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, the Sun Rivers is set to close. That, that will close this week. And then at the November meeting, there'll be a resolution increasing their sales tax exemption.
And if I, if I could just add, I mean, this is, this is one of the problems I think you'll be seeing in a lot of these applications that have been sitting around for a while. And now, as you get close to closing, everybody realizes that construction costs have gone up so dramatically that an application that was submitted a year ago actually doesn't, doesn't accurately, doesn't actively reflect current construction costs. I, I believe that some of the economic studies that were done did, did look at a higher number than what was in the application, but certainly not the cost that we have now, and, and most of it is based upon hard costs of construction. So materials costs have gone up, and as people, as these, as they sign contracts with various contractors, they realize that the estimates that they had originally are, you know, totally, totally out of whack.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm seeing it for, from applications that were submitted in July and August. And as you're going to sign the construction contracts, costs are just skyrocketing and will continue to skyrocket. I would not be surprised on many of our, but ones we've already closed, that before they completed, they'll be coming back and asking the increase of sales tax amount. I mean.
Yeah, I think you're probably also the request. The request for extensions.
Yeah, yeah, you, you extensions as well. Try ordering a stove or an oven right now. Excuse me?
I said, try buying dinner. Everything's more expensive.
Yeah, yeah, but we're trying to get anything, appliances, construction, flooring, steel, everything, if you can get it, you know, you're paying more, but even, even when you, you finally do, you know, it, it's just things you used to be able to get within a week or two weeks are taking months and months and months, which then adds additional costs because you gotta bring, you know, electricians back, or you gotta bring the plumbers back, and, you know, when they're not doing it when they're the first time, you gotta get them back, because there's additional costs. Everything is just rippling through the economy.
Everybody concentrated on the lumber spike, and the lumber spike then went down again, but the other costs continued to stay up. And to respond to Lisa, we will not be looking for any sales tax if they've been on the dinner, though it's only on these hard construction.
Bill? If you want to send, yeah. We're all going to Lisa's house.
Question for you. The, is this request to close and then come back to, to address the, the overruns? Is that unique to this year of uncertainty in the market?
No, I mean, I, I think, I think the only thing that's unique is that it's happening as quickly between closing and like the next board meeting. I think a lot of the projects we've heard closed earlier this year, anticipating coming back, you know, in the next month or so, saying, hey, we used our sales tax exemption and we're not done yet. So I, I anticipate.
My question is, we've done thi- this type of a request in the past?
Many times.
Okay.
Many times, not usually, you know, before we closed. If they had known that, if they had known this three weeks ago, we would have had time to have done a new public hearing and would have been handled today for the closing tomorrow. But it's just the timing of it was, we didn't have enough time to hold a new public hearing.
I was wondering why we just didn't amend the original request to but just answer that question.
It'll be more, yeah, it'd be more than a hundred thousand dollars in new benefits, so we have to hold a new public hearing.
Okay.
And the other thing I will say parenthetically is that the increase in these construction costs means an increased economic benefit. So as the costs go up, when you do the calculation of the economic benefits of the area, that, that goes up as a consequence of the increased spending also.
Bill, do you need a resolution for a new public hearing?
Just a consent to the board.
Okay. Everybody on board for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for having this hearing today. Bye-bye.
Take care.
No, I just want to jump back to the, the two applications for the fuel cells. I think that discussion, and thank you, Lenore, for raising that issue. I think it was an excellent discussion. This is not going to be the, the last of the fuel cells we see. And I think the minutes will reflect that discussion, will form a great background for the future applications.
There, there, there will be more solar projects, more fuel cell projects, and more battery storage projects.
There's gonna be things that we don't even know about yet, or at least I don't know about yet.
Interesting question. What comes out of that discussion on the fuel cell? Representative, the Northfield group mentioned there were carveouts from the electrical output for those fuel cells for specific companies or areas within those fuel cell. Could we, in the future, carve out production from future fuel cells for IDA projects within a proximity to those fuel cells?
I, so I did a lot of research into this community, and now I can't even think of what it's called. And that, what is it? Community? No, community power, community, that it's, I have
Yes.
Community what?
I think it's just called community-based solar. It's where you have customers that buy that power at that rate, you know, box in a rate.
But so, so I think that there's the potential for it, but I'm not so sure that we have the authority to, to do it. I know that the town has been pursuing community power for, for residents in certain areas. But I think it's a, it's a little bit of a heavy lift, and so I think.
Yes, PSENG has a whole sector, and they're, they don't. It's like one side of the company doesn't talk to the other. And one will think it's a good idea, and the other will say we don't have transmission in the area. So it's still a very big work in progress. We haven't even been able to do one.
Having said all of that.
Morning.
Down the road, it might be something that we could do, but I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah, and just remember, fuel cells, fuel cells are not really alternative energy. Hate to break everybody's bubble. I mean, they run with natural.
My question, that's why I was asking these questions. I agree. It's not really renewable energy.
They're middle ground.
What, what it's, what it's doing, it's it's using natural gas to produce hydrogen. And then when the hydrogen is burned, it does not produce CO2 that goes in the atmosphere. It only produces water.
Right.
So it's, it's
That's what's
Renewable, but green. It, it's not polluting.
And it uses the term, this amount of water, just so you know.
Well, is that, and that, my understanding is technologies.
What's that?
There's three different technologies. I think one of them uses a ton of water. I don't know if the other two do.
It did, listen, is it better than an oil plant? Yes. So is it better than a coal burning plant? Absolutely. It's, but is it?
Yeah.
Is winter solar? No.
No, but Got a question on, on procedure. If they were putting this fuel cell up for the specific purpose of a specific user and not any of it going into the grid for public consumption, would that, would they be able to qualify for our benefits?
Yes.
Yes, because that's no different from, you know, when we've done a lot of our projects and people putting solar on their roofs.
For their own.
Parking lots.
Okay.
Yep. Going back to Fred's earlier comment about, you know, for IDA projects, that's, you get into whether or not you're creating a semi-utility. It raises a lot of issues with the Public Service Commission. But in other states, not, not New York per se, but in other states, we have done projects where developers will put up a solar farm and with it financed with, you know, the tax credits. And then what they do is the, they can structure an agreement with the local utility that that energy will go into the grid. But then low-income users of this power system will get a credit against their, their electric bills for that power. So you, you are helping low-income persons and people getting tax credits. So it's like a social, you know, the green facility was socially responsible and a lot. And there are investors who invest in those kind of projects. I have not seen one like that done in New York State. Doesn't mean it couldn't be, but it hasn't been done yet. Something that may be worth pursuing.
Bill, are there wheeling or transmission charges added on to the actual cost of the electricity?
Doesn't, no, so you're still putting electricity into the system. The investors are getting their tax credits, so that's what they care about. And low-income users are getting, you know, a discount on their electricity. So it, it, it can work. Other, other utilities, particularly in the DC area, have made it work, and it's very responsible way of investing. If the people who are socially conscious and, and green investors, and people, they market the tax credits to those people. Would, would LIPA slash PSENG ever be able to figure that out, or CONED, or any other ones in New York State? I don't know. I don't even know if New York State Public Service Commission would allow it, but it's something we could pursue.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the order that we have on the agenda. Under resolutions, we have a resolution for Coast to Coast Real Estate LLC. Marty, I think you need to recuse on this one.
Yep. I leave the room. You're sending a text or you wound up?
Yeah, you, you can, we'll, we'll shoot you a text. It should only take like two minutes, I would expect.
Send me a text.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
Hold on.
Okay, so Marty has a conflict on this project. So just, just to explain to everybody, Coast to Coast is a project that we closed a week or two ago. It's an uh, a week or two ago. It's an existing building. Uh, they purchased the former Grucci facility and everything is closed. We're all done. But we had a realization that we held this public hearing electronically. And Bill realized that although we're allowed to have these meetings virtually, Hockel didn't change, um, the public, the, our public healing hearings. And, um, so we still, we had to have, we had to hold this public hearing and the next two. A second time supplement, as a supplement, just to make sure that they were legal, we had, we held them, um, in person. So this was, I think the attorneys called us belt and suspenders. But we did them again, just, just to be sure that everything was, um, above board.
So Bill, this is a ratification of a public hearing that's already been held?
But it's a ratification of the prior resolution that, because we held a new public hearing.
Okay.
Lisa, I, I'd just like to put a statement on the record. The Grucci building that was referred to in the presentation is not in any way connected to me Felix Grucci. It's my nephew's building. Uh, I have nothing to do with the business operations. I've retired from the company over five years ago and have no interest in the building, no interest in the company. And in fact, I didn't even know this took place until Lisa just broke my, my family's name into the conversation. So for the record, I just wanted, I wanted to put that on the record so that there was no confusion that I, as a city board member, was, uh, involved in any kind of a deal where the IDA was involved.
Thank you, Felix. All right. I need a motion. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Lenore. On the vote, Mr. Grucci.
Yes.
Rob Rocky.
Yes.
Shite.
Yes, and we always trust you, Felix.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
One vote yes, the motion is carried.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is for AE Manorville two. And I just asked Marty to come back in, just like, uh, the last public hearing, this was another of the public hearings that we did virtually. So this AE Manorville two, just to remind everybody, is a, uh, solar installation and a best system, a battery energy storage system, uh, that's planned to go on the town's Manorville compost site. We already have a solar installation there, but there's going to now be an additional solar installation and a best system located there. And again, this is, um, you know, a supplement, we did a supplementary public hearing, and I apologize, I don't know if I said this, for, for Coast to Coast as well, there were no comments. Um, but we held that public hearing yesterday also.
Have a motion please. So, thank you, second.
Refer to Felix.
Got a second, Anne Marie?
I'm a second, yes.
Thank you. On the vote, Mr. Callahan, if you're back?
I'm back.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Rob Rocky?
Yes.
Mrs. Shite?
Yes.
One vote yes, motion's carried.
Okay. And then basically the exact same thing for the C two NY slash EDPR public hearing. Again, there was no comment. And just to remind everybody, this is the, um, solar carport project that is, um, located at the town's amphitheater. And so just exact same situation as the last two, there was no comment and it's a supplementary supplemental public hearing.
Motion please. Thank you, Lenore. Second.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Okay, Felix.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Rob Rocky?
Yes.
Mr. Shite?
Yes.
One vote yes, the motion's carried. Bill, the current legislation runs till January 15th. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Long Island Avenue Holdings LLC. Just to remind everybody, this was a plan, uh, we closed this 2019, I think.
Um, November, yeah.
When was it? Howard, September?
I think this is December of 2013.
Okay. Yep. Um, and the plan was for them to build a 15,000 square foot facility, um, and then lease it to, uh, subtenants. And if their plan was, they thought it would probably be some, a bunch of smaller, um, end users. Uh, but of course, if somebody came in who wanted the whole thing, I think they'd be amenable to that, but their plan was to market it as, as smaller units. Um, and then, as Howard said, it was December of 2019 and we all know what happened shortly after that. What they, and they, they never started construction and they've come back to us and they've said they do want to start construction. They have asked if we would be agreeable to giving them a 30-month extension for their completion date and their sales tax exemption, um, to May 30th of 2024. And that also means that we would have to push their pilot start date to the 2020, 2024, 2025 year. Uh, they would still be paying what, what they, their normal taxes until the pilot starts. So it's not that they would get a longer pilot. It'll just start at a different time. And they also asked if they, if we would consider pushing their job creation numbers to 30 months after, um, after completion. And the request right now is to basically accept, I'm asking if you accept this, this air quote application and then, um, set a public hearing. So does anyone have any questions?
Sunday, your report, do we need a motion for that?
You need a motion just to, to tell me to set the public hearing, but basically it's just if you.
Who's the principal in this here?
Uh, which Matt?
Silvery.
Well, oh, that's true. That's true. Um, Silvery is the, is the developer. I was thinking of our contact, but, um, and Howard, Howard, is there anything I should add to that?
No, I, I think you, um, explained it.
And the letter was in the package too.
All right. Then we need a motion for Lisa to accept, uh, to set the public hearing.
The most.
Thank you, Marty. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Lenore. On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
To Grucci?
Yes.
Rob Rocky?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that motion is carried.
Okay, um, prevailing wage legislation, I think we covered this pretty thoroughly earlier, but just keep in mind that the letter that we received from the Department of Labor, which, um, it's the high points of this was included in your package. So, um, you know, as a point of reference and like we indicated before, there's, there's a lot of unknowns with this and we are doing our best to try to figure out how, what we need to do and how this is going to impact us. So I, does anyone have any follow-up questions from our earlier discussion?
Bill, is there any chance, I mean, to get this, as bad as the legislation is, but to try and get it right? Is there any chance they postpone it for another six, six months or 12 months rather than try and jam it down and have to change it later on?
You know, nobody knows, Fred. I mean, again, um, I'm not, I've not, I've not heard anything, um, say that Governor Hochul's even looking at it. So I don't know if we're going to have the commission, uh, in place by then. Uh, so who, it, it's one of these things where nobody, nobody at the state government is at least publicly focusing on it. So could, she probably could, you know, grant another, um, extension, although the, um, I imagine the construction trade unions would, um, not be pleased. Uh, and she's in an election year, so I'm not hopeful that it'll, there'll be another extension.
Just from my, my knowledge, what is the prevailing wage? I, I mean, I know what it is, but what's the dollar amount?
It, it's set by the Department of Labor for every, um, county and it's my understanding about 20 to 30% higher than the commercial, uh, union scale. So if union scale is 50 bucks an hour, they set prevailing wage at like $65 an hour. And they call it prevailing wage, you know, and it's not subject to review by anybody. It's just, you know, in the New York State Department of Labor is controlled by the labor unions. And, and again, this is something that as a taxpayer, every taxpayer in New York State forever has been paying extraordinarily high construction costs. It's why it costs so much to build a school, build, you know, any kind of public infrastructure in New York State, you know, at twice the cost of, um, anywhere else. So including cities, you know, like London and Paris. All the cities in Europe, Japan, all, all construction costs in the US, particularly New York, are so much higher, you know, um, it, it's.
So if I understood you correctly, uh, Bill, if the union scale is 50, they're saying that a private contractor not using union, union labor has to pay $65 an hour?
Whatever, whatever. Yeah. So it doesn't have, the statute doesn't say you have to use union labor, you know? Prevailing wage is a euphemism for you, for union scale or union, uh, with employees. You have to pay whatever. So if the town of Brookhaven was building a building, whatever rates they're paying at that town level or the Suffolk County or a school district, those quote prevailing rates, prevailing wage rates set by New York State Department of Labor is what a private contractor who's getting benefits from an IDA, uh, or private companies, they, that's what their contractor will have to pay their employees. But it also goes beyond that. It also includes, once the building's built, everybody who does maintenance at the building, the janitors, the guys mowing the lawn, landscapers, painters, anybody going forward doing that kind of maintenance work has to pay prevailing wages. So it's, it's not just construction. It doesn't end when the construction's over. It goes forever.
Projects will move out of state.
That's ridiculous. That's crazy.
Texas, Florida.
Well, so.
Who's going to build here?
I mean.
Nobody.
Yeah.
Why would you? No.
There's a number, a number. A number of the developers who have done a lot of projects in the town of Brookhaven and Suffolk County have all said that, you know, it's, it's already hard enough to get a reasonable rate of return on your investment here. Uh, that they will now consider, um, you know, if, if they've got two projects, one in New York and one in, uh, North Carolina or somewhere else, the ones in, uh, out of New York State will get priority.
Of course.
Did I understand correctly, Bill, that prevailing wage is based on, but higher than, uh, the union's labor agreements? So that if you're using union labor, you have to pay this, this bounteous increase?
So even if you're using union, you know, all 100% union job as, at a, they have their commercial rate, they have a residential rate, a small commercial rate, a large commercial, you know, for a large project, and then they have their governmental prevailing wage. So everybody will now pay the highest governmental prevailing wage rate, not the union commercial scale.
I just, I just looked it up. There's a 51-page document, the, the prevailing wage schedule, and you put in the county that you're in and it brings it up and it's specific dollar amounts for each of job title. So for instance, a floor coverer is $54.75 an hour as of 7/120 of 21. And that's true in Bronx, Kings, Nassau, New York, Queens, Richmond, Rockland, Suffolk, Suffolk and Westchester. And it gives a little description of what they actually do. And then there's the per hour supplemental benefits of about $47. And overtime pay, I mean, th- this is a huge, this is a, um, accounting. Or, or I don't know, Lori, maybe your, your folks would be excited by this. This is a, this is a significant, uh, spreadsheet to get this stuff straight. So it's per job.
Again, so.
It's a poison pill for New York. It's a poison pill for job creation in New York, as I see it.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's, um, I mean, the way you, you can manipulate it. You, we may have to give five-year pilots and then down the road, give another five-year extension. Um, you know, it, it's, until you start crunching the numbers, it's going to be hard to figure out you know, what, how it works. Uh, you know, the people, you know, developers will say, I want a shorter pilot, you know? If, if, if a seven-year pilot gets them less than 30%, uh, they'll do that. I mean, that's their incentive, but it, it's not. You know, again, had, had they allowed for carve-out, unless you enter into a, a project labor agreement, you know, I think that would have been a reasonable compromise. And that's what all the law and IDAs have in their own prevailing wage policies, where you pay prevailing wage or enter PLA. Westchester is something similar. You have the PLA agreements, you know, you can negotiate the rates and sometimes, you know, depending on the project, the unions, uh, I've seen them come below even their commercial rate, you know, because they want the project. Um, this to me, you know, making a commercial project pay the same rate as a school district or municipality, um, a lot of developers are going to say it's not worth coming here, you know, to New York.
Bill, I have a question, um, and maybe this is too political for this group, but you know, we have November 2nd, um, the election for, it's mostly local. If, um, we change, uh, the, um, uh, seats in Albany, can we, can, can the new legislator, that legislation that comes in uh, fight this or this already in the works? It's on the books and.
Well, I mean, you know, any law, any law that's been enacted can be amended or repealed.
Okay.
Um, it would require a change, I think, a change in the membership of both houses or recognition by leadership in both houses that, um, people get 100% of zero on this bill. Um, you know, i- i- it's, you know, it was not a, I, you know, from what I can understand of it, to the extent you can understand the, the prevailing wage statute, it was not a very well, um, thought-out bill. It, it created more problems than it solved and ultimately I don't think the people who thought they were going to benefit from it will benefit from it.
Bill, if you're in all the union, uh, project, are you still subject to the prevailing wage?
Yeah. So that's why I said, you know, if you had a project, you know, something like Tri-Tech, Ron Cub, 100% union, they have project labor agreements in place. Going forward, if they have to pay prevailing wage as opposed to, and, and, and that, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they have am I right that they are paying prevailing wage or did you require, um, prevailing wage or, or PLAs in the, in the, uh?
No, any project, any project on town land has to pay prevailing wage.
What about Tri-Tech?
What's that?
Yeah, that's what.
No, Ron Cub is not on town land, so no.
Yeah. So, but, but for Ron Cub, under their master development agreement, I believe they had to have a PLA in place.
Yes, but that, as you, Bill has eloquently explained, is not the same as prevailing wage.
No. I was always under the impression that prevailing wage was union scale, but it's really not.
Well, prevailing wage is, again, it, it's a euphemism for union. It's the amount that are paid prevailing wage as set by New York State Department of Labor is the amount that basically municipalities and school districts pay. Is not commercial union scale. Higher.
That's wild.
And you could also, if you also, if you have a PL, you know, so as taxpayers, I mean, I don't think New York State taxpayers are aware of why you build a school in New York, you build the identical school in North Carolina, it's twice as expensive in New York. It's, you know, it's a combination of the prevailing wages. Um, and then, you know, we also have, you know, unless there's a special legislation, you can't have a general contractor on a, um, you know, on a municipal project, you have to have separate contracts for construction, electrical, plumbing and HVAC. And, and again, you also can't do design-build contracts with G, with guaranteed maximum price for municipal projects. You know, unless it's specially, you know, so everything that governor, every project that Governor Cuomo spearheaded, he would make sure there was uh either by executive order or in the statute allowing for design-build with a GMP, guaranteed maximum price contract. Uh, when it comes to the schools, the towns, the counties, uh villages, they, they, they can't do that, so it costs so much more. Every, whatever a municipality builds in New York, almost twice anywhere else in the country.
When you say design and build, what does that mean?
So in the design-build, you, you put out an RFP, I want a new town highway department building. And you, you put out your, what you want, and people will send you a, a thing saying, we will, this is what we'll build, we'll design it, we'll build it, it's basically a turnkey. And they, they cut, they design it with architects, engineers, they build it, guaranteed maximum price. When it's completed, the municipality gets the building for, you know, whatever they, whatever they pay for, and then walk in. So, you know, typically, that's when, you know, that's how it's done everywhere else in the country. It's all design-build. It's coming in, one contract to design it, build it, pay for it.
And un- under that scenario, they're, they're exempt from the uh prevailing wage?
No, New York doesn't, doesn't exempt from prevailing wage, but they basically exempted themselves from the Wicks Law. It's the Wicks Law that also adds dramatically to the costs. So New York has a double whammy of prevailing wage, which is higher than normal construction scale, and the Wicks Law, which requires multiple contracts. Unless it's a special project of the governor's, and then he, he, our former governor was very good at getting, you know, design-builds in for his own projects, you know, like the Casco Uscos Bridge, the Mario Cuomo Bridge, anything the governor wanted, he made sure. Tappan Zee, the former, formerly known as the Tappan Zee Bridge.
Listen, I, I just have to say that if I was governor, I would have named it the Amarico Atarasto Bridge. So I haven't.
And Matt, if you were running for governor, I'd vote for you.
And then I'll have, be happy to second that.
Yep. Don't run for governor, Matt.
Oh, no, don't worry about that. I'm running for the hills. That's about it.
Okay, so, does anybody have any other questions about prevailing wage?
Obviously, for next couple.
Yeah.
IDA meeting.
No, that was enough of bad news for one day.
Well, so then, on that note, let's move to the next thing, which is some, some good news, I would say. The, the, the IDA impact study is included in your packet. The New York State EDC contracted with Camoin Associates to do a, they did a whole bunch of um you know, group meetings to talk about what IDAs do, how we handle things, what we see in the horizon. And this study is the result of all of that work. And I, I think if you take a little bit of time to read it, and honestly, I haven't finished reading it, but what I have read so far is, is really um a, a great piece about all the hard work that all the IDAs do across, across the state. So it's a, we went from bad news to some good news. And so, so when you have a little bit of time, I, I think you will enjoy that study.
I, I would just add that a copy of that report was sent to James Bedore of Newsday, who's one of the few reporters that really understands um what we do and why we do it. And I would not be surprised, somebody gets by his editorial board, that you see a very favorable article in Newsday somewhere down the road.
And to tie in with um, actually both prevailing wage and New York State EDC, Joss is gonna be sending around a um email for um, New York State EDC is doing another one of their, what, what is it, Academy? Do they call it the Academy? Academy courses, and prevailing wage is one of the top subjects on it. Um, Joss is gonna send that around in today or tomorrow. If anybody's interested, just let us know. Happy to, to sign you up for it. I've gone to the past few that they've done, and there's, always leave with a lot of good information. I'm, is this from virtual?
I think it's virtual. I think it's November.
Yes, yes. Joss sent the announcement out already.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Joss. It's actually, I think, November sixteenth.
Yes.
Yes. That reminds me, that is the day that we have um sort of earmarked for our um Ron Cub public hearing. This conference goes until four-thirty, uh, so I think we can just step out a little bit early, pop over into the next meeting. And, but that's still, that's just a placeholder, that November sixteenth, we're still working through the details to see if in fact we're gonna hold the public hearing that day or not. I think um it might end up getting adjourned to another date.
And that's the imminent remain public hearing.
Yes. Um, and then, if, if no one has any questions, I just wanted to transition over now to keeping with the New York State EDC, I just wanted to show everybody this award. I don't know how this is gonna work so well. Sorry, I'm gonna, does that work? I don't know.
Yeah.
Very cool.
We got a very nice award. Um, New York State EDC did, did something. I, I think it was very smart what they did, was they gave all of the IDAs, um, the twenty-twenty-one, was it just the IDs or it was everybody? The IDs, okay. They gave all the IDAs the twenty-twenty-one Economic Developer of the Year Award. Um, so just, I thought that was very um smart and, and thoughtful. And so we collectively, all across the state, uh, got this award. And I know that Amy was in touch with um Todd Shapiro's office to, to try and put out some press that we and everybody else got this award. So I just wanted to show you that um.
That, that award is actually a big deal. Um, it's announced every year in Cooperstown, as it was this year. Uh, the fact that all IDAs received it was kept a secret. It was, you know, for obvious reason, very well received. And I think everybody gave everybody else a standing ovation. Bill was there and I was there at the time.
So, congratulations. The next item on the agenda is governance committee to discuss our UTAP. I just wanted to mention it again. It's in your packet. Also, I haven't gotten any feedback from anyone, but take some time, read through it, let me know what you think. And we're gonna try to put together a governance committee meeting coming up. We, we tried, but we had some, some issues uh getting everybody together. So we're gonna try again to consider if we should make some edits to our UTAP. Uh, and it's included in your packets. Also included in your packets is your board assessment. It's that time of year again, so fill out your board assessments and get them in to Joss. You can drop them off, you can put them in snail mail, you can snap a picture and text them, whatever, whatever works best for you. The next, oh, you know what, and I apologize, that should have been on the LDC agenda also. You have to do one for the IDA and one for the LDC. So sorry, I should have uh included that in the, in the other packet and agenda. Um, next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, is our bus tour. So Amy is gonna follow up with an email, but I'll just tell you all right now, we're going to meet at the Topgolf facility. We should probably park off, you know, a little, a little off to the side. Uh, but we'll meet there at ten-thirty AM on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. We'll hop on the bus and we have, I think, seventy projects that we're going to do. We're gonna drive around and uh do drive-bys of. So everybody who can attend, we, um, I think everybody's RSVP'd to Amy. If you said no and now you think you can go, great, we have plenty of room, so we'd love to have you there. And if you can't go, just let us know. And we're gonna end up at Topgolf at the end. And uh, anyone who wants to take a couple of swings can take some swings.
Anybody have other IDA coming with us that we're invited?
I'm sorry?
Any of the board members from the town or anybody coming with us?
Um, I invited the town board and I got, I got, everybody was very interested and asked that we keep them in the loop. We have to confirm a couple of things. So right now, I don't know, maybe Kevin. Kevin was the only one who seemed like he might actually get on the bus with us. But that's still, that was a while ago. Sometimes things sound good in concept, and when you get closer, they're a little bit daunting. So we have to reach out to him and just see if that still works for him, but.
Gotcha.
But he's, he's on our, our list. Um, but I think, I think he's the only one who might join. But that might change too. Workforce development, I just wanted to let you guys know that Jim and I met with Pat Doyle, Boyle of Ignite, beer or day, um, Ignite, Ignite, he's from Ignite and, I, Long Island. And he has an apprentice, an apprenticeship program. So we are waiting for some more information from him, but what we're going to do is, once he gets, sends us the flyer about this, we're going to blast that out to all of our projects in the hopes that some of our projects will be interested in sending some of their employees to this program to get trained in. And there's a, there's a whole host of things, the, the one that they mentioned to us that we thought was, was sort of a, of interesting take on, on um courses was they have a, they have Spanish for managers. So instead of trying to teach the line workers English, they figured, let's just teach the managers Spanish. And so it's, it's focused on their industry, but, so they can, they can work together. There's still the opportunity to teach English to the, the employees also. But as a stopgap in between, they're like, let's just make sure that, that our people can communicate. But it's, it's um pretty much you name it, whatever training you might need, they have an apprenticeship program for it. I, he was rattling off things like uh, uh, beer brewing, just everything, so.
Sign up.
Hospitality.
So um, that, we met with him about that program. And then we also met with um Andrea Benia from WDI, for Work, Work, Workforce Development Institute. And she has funding available so that if a employer wants to send their employees to one of the Ignite Long Island um apprenticeship programs, then she can help with the, any costs that are associated with it. And the cool thing, one of the cool things about the apprenticeship program is that you have to remain employed at the sponsor for two years. So, so you guys send me for the apprenticeship program, I have to remain employed with you for two years. Otherwise, I lose my, my ability to complete the program. So it really helps with um retention. And, and so there, there's a whole bunch of little things like that, that were very intriguing and I think smart about the way they put the program together. So hopefully, we are gonna get more information about it, and then we'll be able to get it out to all of our projects soon and go from there, just trying to, to, you know, keep our workforce development focus alive, especially since we haven't been able to do job fairs, which is what we historically have always done. Emery, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, um, there are two other programs, uh, uh, entities that we may also be interested in highlighting to our projects. One is the advanced manufacturing uh program that John Lombardo runs at Suffolk Community College.
Yes.
A, pardon?
We are well hooked up into that one, so we've done a bunch.
And, and the other is a uh, a new entity uh called the Institute for Workforce Advancement. It's the phoenix that rose from the ashes of the Composite Prototyping Center. Uh, and it too is focused on uh training for manufacturing. So it might be prudent to get uh, to, to ask those two groups as well. And when there's a blast out to, to our projects, let them know about the diversity of workforce training uh resources that we have.
Emery, would you, would you send an introduction email to me and Jim?
Absolutely.
For the workforce, we know John very well, we've worked with them over the years, and we've highlighted their programs to our projects. But if you would send us the Institute for Workforce Advancement.
I absolutely will. Glad to do it.
Thank you. Lenore?
Lisa, can that, um, can any of these um tools be used for people who are looking to hire and say, listen, we'll train you? And uh, because Mike, you know, being from the chambers, you know, the, these people can't find any workers. So this is a great way to promote getting a job without having any training, but we'll put you through training. Is that something that's available to utilize in this? Or do they have to already be working there to be on the apprentice program? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure about that, but, so if you, if you said, I, I wanna hire you, and listen, if you come in, I will put you straight into this program. What, I think that, that will work just fine. Um, I think you have to have a sponsor. So, you know, company X has to say, I'm bringing these people forward. So I don't think that they're just training the general public. But what they will do is, if you find someone who you're interested in hiring, you hire that person, and then you sponsor them through the program. And, and there's, whatever fees are associated with sponsoring, there's grants out there to offset that.
Right.
So it's a little.
Could be a good way to promote, um, you know, to, to the companies, uh, you know, uh, Jim just mentioned hospitality, you know, um, the hotels are struggling uh to find anybody to work. And I don't, you know, as easy as, you know, something like, oh, it's not that it's easy, it's the worst job, the hardest job in the whole hotel, but housekeeping, but they can't even find salespeople. So a lot of these people don't, didn't have no sales experience per se or hotel experience. They could say, listen, we'll hire you, we'll give you that, we'll give you that, not, that training that you'll need to even be better in your job. And that then at least gives them two years with the person. I see that as being something that should be married together, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and we're, we're trying to help them get the word out. So we, we were um very interested in the program also. We still haven't gotten the flyer yet, I don't think. But we, we reached out. We haven't, have we?
No, we have not. In fact, I sent the follow-up email, reminding them about our meeting, thanking them, and asking them to forward us the information so we can get it out to our companies.
So with, you know, as soon as we get something, we will um share it with our companies. And uh Andrea also offered that if we, when we share the information, we can see the her. And then any company that has any workforce needs, she'll be able to go in and um meet with them and help them figure out how her organization can assist. Also, we're just, you know, we used to do a, a couple of events every year, and we would highlight these programs and have people come and sit down and have a breakfast and have people talk. And then people ask questions, and then afterwards, hey, let me sign up, come see my facility. And it's just that it, it doesn't, it's not happening right now. So we're muddling through how to keep things moving in a different world. But we are working on it. Any questions? Yeah, I, so I know that we had, um, Michael was on before, he was going to give a presentation, but I don't see that he's on right now. Amy, did, have you heard from, from Michael? Is he coming back on?
Amy's muted.
Amy, you're muted. We can hear her.
Hi, sorry. Yeah, he was with us for a while, and now I don't see him in the attendees. I don't know where he went. My apologies, but he was, he was on for, for a bit. So let me just email him quick and see if I can get him back.
If not, we get him on for next month?
Yeah, I mean, we, should we just, all right.
Well, he's, he's scheduled to be on every month, so.
Right, perfect, thanks.
Don't even worry about it.
Fred, I have a question before we adjourn.
We actually, we're gonna ask you to stay on for a little bit, Felix, but go ahead.
Before we go into executive session, just two quick questions for you. Uh, a while back, we did a, a, a pretty in-depth look at the airport. A while back, we did a pretty in-depth look at the airport with the, with an eye on perhaps the IDA purchasing, is that purchasing the airport? Is that still on the on the horizon or has that been scrapped?
I don't think, and that, chime in, but I don't think the town is is interested in having us purchase it, the airport, any anymore.
No, we, we have, a lot of things changed and the revenue streams changed over there, so I think the town is just going to keep it.
That's fine, I just wanted to get it off of my list of things to ask. And the last question that I had is, many years ago, when I was there, we we had this industrial zone that offered benefits to people who wanted to bring their businesses there, has, is that still in existence or a successor to that in existence still today?
Do you mean the Empire Zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the Empire Zone program ended, I want to say in 2007, so that ended a while ago, it was replaced with the Excelsior program, I think it's called now.
Yeah, I think you're right.
No, that was before. And that, instead of being a zone, is the entire state, there's programs available, it's a little bit narrowly defined now, we we find that fewer projects qualify for it, but there is, there still is a program. And anytime we meet with anybody about growing their business, we always make sure that they have a contact at Empire State Development, so that they can reach out to them and learn specifically about their programs. We always, we let everybody know about the programs through PSE and G, National Grid, New York State, so so we just make sure, and depending on what their needs are, we try to tailor them a little bit.
But the pro, the program that we had that actually carved out a geographical chunk of land and said, this land is entitled to these specific benefits, that doesn't exist any longer.
Now the program covers the entire state.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
If not, we need a motion to go into executive session and Josh.
To discuss lawsuits and personnel issues.
Oh, so moved.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, Josh just sent me link, and guys, just bear with me because I'm the one getting us into this, and I I'm not as adept at this as everybody else. I will be there, though, just.
All right, everybody.
Take care, Jim.
Stay safe.
Take good care, Jim.
You too, thanks, Emery, be well, everybody, stay safe.
Are we logging off and going to this other one, right?
Ooh, I don't know, are we?
Yeah, Josh just sent out an email.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, guys, but I'm in the same boat.
Thanks, Marty.
Yep, find the link. All right, so we got to say goodbye for this one. And go leave me. I need a motion to come out of the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Marty. On the vote, we'll go in reverse order, just Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Mr. Parvaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gruchi?
Yes.
Callahan?
Yes.
Burn votes, yes, we are out of the executive session.
And there was no action taken while we were in executive session.
Unless there's something else to be discussed, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the IDA. It is now 11:21.
So moved.
Yep. Mr. Callahan?
Second.
Vote, Mr. Gruchi?
Yes.
Dr. Parvaki?
Yes.
Mr. Scheit?
Yes.
Mr. Burn votes, yes, thank you very much for your time and your comments, and we will see you again in November, hopefully in person, starting in January.
November 17th is our next meeting, but we'll see a bunch of you next week at the bus tour.
Yep.
I can't wait.
Sorry, I can't make the tour, but you guys enjoy.
Sorry, I can't also.
We understand.
Have a good time.
Thank you.
Great stuff.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.